Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The Smithtown Planning Board is now in session. Adam, would you do the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
We thank you. Alec.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. The first item on the agenda this evening, the Planning Department recommends the following items for adjournment as we have insufficient information to act upon them. Under Part One, Item One, 2011-01 All Seasons Motor Lodge. Item Two, 2012-04 Storybook Homes. Item Three, 2012-02 Carlson Associates. Item Four, 2009-05 FB4 Realty. Item Five, 773 Scholar Estates. Item Six, 1092 Winston's Run. Item Seven, 288 Olivia Estates. Under Part Two, Item Eight, 2010-06 KBC Holdings. Item Nine, Case 911A Glen Hill Northern. Mr. Chairman, these are the items the Planning Department recommends for adjournment this evening.
Is there anybody here to be heard on those items to be adjourned? Hearing none, no motion.
Motion to adjourn the matters that were just read.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed, so ordered.
Mr. Chairman, the next item on the agenda under Part Three, Item Ten, is a recommendation to the BZA for a two-lot subdivision called Larson Platt 1153. The applicant is requesting final approval to subdivide a .92 acre parcel into two single-family lots. In order to construct the subdivision, a variance from the Board of Zoning Appeals to include environmentally sensitive lands in the minimum lot area is required. Before the BZA can act, it is required by Section 2776 of Town Law to consider the Planning Board's comments to the BZA. The subject property is comprised from one rectangular tax lot that is 400 feet by 100 feet. The applicant is proposing to subdivide the .92 acre parcel into two single-family lots. The property fronts a street at both ends with 100 feet of frontage on Larson Avenue and 100 feet of frontage on North Avenue. The proposal is to divide the lot in half and construct two homes, one facing Larson Avenue and one facing North Avenue. The site is surrounded by properties owned R-10. While the proposal appears to meet all the lot area requirements for single-family residences, the property contains environmentally sensitive land, depth to groundwater less than 10 feet. In calculating the amount of buildable lot area for a particular parcel, all ESL must be excluded when determining yield. The engineering and highway departments have no objections to the applicant's request and the traffic safety department has no comment. The Planning Department has reviewed the applicant's proposal and is concerned about how the elevation of homes on this property in relation to the existing homes. However, the design of the site can be addressed at the approval hearing and does not affect the Planning Board's recommendation to the BZA regarding the environmentally sensitive land variance. The Planning Department offers the following resolution for the Board's consideration. Be it resolved that the Planning Board hereby makes a recommendation to the Board of Zoning Appeals to include .92 acres of environmentally sensitive lands, depth to groundwater less than 10 feet, in the minimum lot area within the proposed subdivision known as map of Larson Platt 1153.
Thank you. Is there anybody here representing the applicant?
Yes, sir.
Name and address, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Vincent Calvosa. My address is 19 Millennium Court in Bohemia, New York. Calvosa, C-A-L-V-O-S-A. For the record, I'd like to submit the affidavit of posting.
Will you give it to the clerk over here, please?
I am a contract vendee to purchase this property for which this application is being presented before you this evening. Obviously here tonight, seeking subdivision approval of this one acre piece of property located at 8 Larson Avenue, Smithtown. It's located on the north side of Larson Avenue, about 500 feet east of Hallock Avenue, and runs as a through lot to North Avenue. Property is currently 100 feet wide by 400 feet deep and is owned R-10, just like the surrounding properties. The application before the Board this evening is to subdivide this parcel in half, whereby creating two 100-foot by 200-foot deep lots, keeping in accordance with the adjacent properties on all sides. I'd like to enter into the record a copy of the section of the Suffolk County tax map showing the size of the subject parcel as it relates to the surrounding properties.
Give it over there. I think we have that map. We don't have that map, sorry.
You can easily see that this is the last lot in the area to be subdivided. All of the neighboring properties have been subdivided at one time or another from a larger piece. As you can see, the subdivided lot numbers, the dot, such and such. The property currently has an old dilapidated house facing Larson Avenue and is in serious disrepair. Please allow me to enter into the record photos of the existing home so you can see Ultimately, should this application be approved by this Board, we would like to demolish the existing home and build two new homes, two new single-family homes. One would be facing Larson Avenue in the approximate location of the existing home and one would face North Avenue as depicted on the subdivision map that was submitted to the Board through the Planning Department. Copy of the subdivision map which you have depicts the creation of two lots which we are seeking this subdivision. In addition, I would like to submit to the record a rendering of what we're proposing to build. Although the building plans have not been created yet, and I understand that this Board does not review house plans, we'd just like to give you and the neighbors a sense of The lots proposed on the subdivision map are in conformance with R-10 with respects to lot area and lot width, and we will certainly be able to conform to all of the other requirements of the R-10 zoning as it relates to setbacks. We're only seeking relief for this condition that exists, which is the property is situated in environmentally sensitive land area and does not allow this land to be altered without a variance from the zoning board. We're asking this Board tonight to recommend this application be heard by the ZBA, and if such action was to be granted, we would be asking for a variance to alter the land by subdivision and increase the FAR from 0 to 100 percent since no FAR is allowed in the ESL as a matter of Smithtown zoning law. The two new homes proposed will fall below the allowable FAR for the R-10 district. With the house facing Larson Avenue, the FAR is calculating to approximately 20 percent and the house facing North Avenue would calculate to approximately 17 percent FAR. I understand that this Board cannot render its decision this evening with regards to the subdivision without a decision from the ZBA. However, we are requesting respectfully that this Board recommend the application to be heard by the BZA for the need of relief in order for us to proceed forward. So that this Board has the assurances that they are making the right decision this evening, I would like to present written approvals that the departments had given us, agencies and other boards that have given us, that have reviewed the application over the last seven or eight months. We have worked diligently with the town of Smithtown's Planning Department, Engineering Department, Highway Department and Environmental Departments to create the best application. I believe you have a land clearing preservation plan as well as an erosion control plan which will obviously mitigate any environmental and engineering concerns. In addition to the work that we have done to date with the town of Smithtown's departments, we have also submitted an application to Suffolk County Department of Health for the subdivision as well as for the construction of two sanitary systems that will be in full accordance with today's sanitary code. At this time, we have a conditional approval from the Health Department pending the town of Smithtown's approval of the application. I have a notice that I would enter into the record also indicating the Board of Health's approval pending town of Smithtown.
Did you get a copy there to the Planning Director?
We just received it.
Just received it?
Yes.
Okay.
The two new homes will have modern-day approved septic systems and will greatly improve the existing environmental conditions despite being located in ESL. The current septic system of the house is outdated and most definitely not performing correctly since it's never been updated over the years. There have been no expansions to the building that's there currently that would have required a Board of Health to mandate the system being upgraded, so it's an old septic system that's there now. To further address any environmental concerns, we have submitted to the Environmental and Waterways Department of the town of Smithtown, and they have issued their approval as well. This application has been reviewed by all of the utility companies that are providing services to the area, and there has been approval for connections to electric, water and gas. I have letters that support that as well that have been submitted to the Planning Department. In addition, the Smithtown's Town Board has reviewed the subdivision map, and that letter has been acknowledged in the file with the Planning Department also. Lastly, like to point out that these proposed lots would be keeping with the size and nature and character of the neighborhood, and by building these new homes, we feel we would be eliminating the blight to the neighborhood that has been endured for a few years now. Our intention is to enhance the neighborhood and hopefully bring back value to those who have been affected by the rundown house. In conclusion, we are requesting of this Board tonight to reserve decision on the subdivision application and recommend this application be heard by the zoning board for the requested variances. Pending their decision, this Board would then be empowered with the necessary information to make a prudent decision. I thank you for your time and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is there anybody in the audience which is to be heard on this application? Members of the Board, any questions?
I have a couple.
Go ahead.
The subdivision's not before us right now. Is that correct?
That's correct. Only the variance request.
Okay. If, my question is, if we pass the resolution as proposed, I guess there's a question for you. Did you hear the resolution? That was read by Planning?
Yes.
Does that prejudice your application?
Well, we are required to go to the BZA.
I understand that.
So the only way I get there is with a...
Okay. Did you hear? I'll read it to you. Do you want to hear it again?
Please.
Be it resolved that the Planning Board hereby makes a recommendation to the Board of Zoning Appeals to include .92 acres of environmentally sensitive lands, depth to groundwater less than 10 feet, in the minimum lot area within the proposed subdivision known as map of Larson Platt number 1153. Does that prejudice your application?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Also, how many square feet are these homes you're proposing?
The two homes are approximately 2,700 square feet each.
And how big are the surrounding homes?
Of equal size. Some are bigger, some are smaller. Most of the homes are about that size.
Thank you.
Would these homes be on a slab or is there going to be a basement?
Because of the depth to groundwater issue, obviously we have concern. The idea is that the houses will be elevated in such a way so that no basements will be constructed. However, we feel that we'll have probably about eight feet, nine feet to depth to groundwater to the slab. They'll be built on a slab. And the neighboring houses are also elevated also, so we'll be grading to an elevation that we feel will get the water away from every property.
Well, yeah, my concern is for the groundwater issue and also just that you're built to character, but Adam's question on square footage answered that for us as well. You're going to be consistent with the neighboring houses in terms of size dimension?
That's correct. There'll probably be some houses that are actually larger than the houses we're going to build in the neighborhood.
Anybody else? A motion to approve the resolution recommended by the Planning Director.
In a matter of map of Larson Platt number 1153, motion to adopt the resolution as read in accordance with the recommendation of the Planning Department.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Have a good evening.
Good morning.
Mr. Chairman, the next item on the agenda under Part Three, Item 11, is a recommendation to the BZA for a lot line amendment for Brief and Gary. The applicants are requesting amendment of lot lines for properties located on the northeast corner of Lancaster Avenue and Leyden Street in Wisconsin to transfer property from Suffolk County Tax Map number 166316 to 166315.1 and sell the remaining part of 166316 to the owners of 166317. In order to approve this lot line amendment, a variance from the BZA to reduce the minimum lot area is required. Before the BZA can act, it is required by Section 2776 of Town Law to consider the Planning Board's comments to the BZA. The Planning Department has received a lot line amendment application for three tax lots that make up two properties. This is an unusual situation as both of the properties are substandard and would remain substandard after the lot line amendment. This application is to alter the tax lot line between 15.1 and 16 in order to fit the house on 15.1 on one lot and sell the remaining part of 16, including the detached garage, to the owner of 17 as illustrated in the attached sketch. The applicants are requesting the amendment in order to give more space to Lot 17 and renovate the home on Lot 15.1 from the sale of the property. This application will shrink the lot on Leyden Street and enlarge the lot on Lancaster Avenue, which will both remain undersized after the lot line amendment. However, this will create more conventional-shaped lots of similar size. Because both lots will require several area variances, this case must go to the BZA. The engineering and highway departments have no objection to the proposed amendment of lot lines and the traffic safety department has no comment. The Planning Department has no objection to this request since a new buildable lot is not being created and the change will result in more conventional-shaped lots of a similar size. The Planning Department offers the following resolution for the Board's consideration. Be it resolved that the Planning Board hereby makes a recommendation to the Board of Zoning Appeals to approve the variances as listed in the table of modifications depicted on the survey prepared by Kohanik &amp; Plan, licensed surveyor dated August 13, 2013, and listed below.
Is there anyone here? Oh, that's good evening.
Donald King, 75, East Main Street, Kings Park, New York. I have a map of the existing lots. I'd just like to hand off the people who understand how now exists.
Okay.
And I have a map of what's proposed.
Okay, thank you. I don't think we've got one for everybody here. We should have one on each way.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
I don't want you to take too long. I have to get to insignia with my clients.
All right.
So it's before you, the Garry's, Mr. and Mrs. Garry have the smaller lot now. Mrs. Garry's mother has the other lot. They're just going to move the lot lines so that the Garry's have a slightly larger lot and the mother-in-law has, mother and mother-in-law will have a smaller lot. But nothing's changed. And I'll go before the ZBA and I'm sure they'll grant the variances.
Okay.
That's it.
Is there anybody here that wants to speak on this application? Members of the Board, any question?
I have one. The parcel that's picking up the area with the garage, are they planning any kind of expansion?
Of the garage?
Well, not of the garage. I'm wondering first if they...
No, I don't. I think they're, this is it.
They're going to keep the garage, then?
Yes.
All right. Hearing no other questions? A motion there from the Planning Department?
In the matter of Brief and Gary, I move that we adopt the resolution as read in accordance with the recommendation of the Planning Department.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, the next item on the agenda under Part Three, Item 12, is a sidewalk waiver request for Omaro Platt 1122. The applicant requests to waive the requirement of installing sidewalks on Cambon Avenue within the subdivision known as Omaro Platt 1122. The map of Omaro Platt was granted conditional final approval by the Planning Board on November 7, 2011. This application was approved for a five-lot subdivision on a 2.884 acre parcel with road frontage on Cambon Avenue and King Arthur's Court North. At the time, the Board approved a performance by an estimate requiring the applicant to install 248 linear feet of sidewalks on Cambon Avenue and 260 linear feet of sidewalks on King Arthur's Court North. The applicant is requesting a waiver of the requirement to install the 248 linear feet of sidewalks on Cambon Avenue. At the Planning Board meeting of September 18, 2013, the Board granted approval to waive the requirement of installing 260 linear feet of sidewalks on the cul-de-sac, which is King Arthur's Court North. The engineering and highway departments have no objection to the applicant's request and the traffic safety department has no comment. The Planning Department had previously identified Cambon Avenue as a street to be retrofitted with sidewalks in the future. Cambon Avenue is a perfectly straight connector road between Middle Country Road and Woodlawn Avenue and has stretches without stop signs or cross streets as long as half a mile. Consequently, traffic traveling on Cambon Avenue between Middle Country Road and Woodlawn Avenue can achieve high speeds and poses a danger to pedestrians. Cambon Avenue is paved approximately 25 feet wide, which leaves little space for pedestrians to share the road with two lanes of traffic, especially with cars parked on the street as well as obstructions such as garbage pails. Planning conducted an onsite inspection and found that there was insufficient space for pedestrians to safely share the road with high-speed traffic. Planning conducted a field inspection of sidewalks in the surrounding area and found that there is a sidewalk at the north end of Cambon Avenue on Woodlawn Avenue, less than a quarter mile north of the site. This sidewalk on Woodlawn connects to those on Lake Avenue and to the St. James Central Business District, which is a half a mile to the west. This sidewalk also connects to the Mill Pond Elementary School, which is one-third of a mile to the east. There are also sidewalks on Middle Country Road at the south end of Cambon Avenue, approximately three-quarters of a mile south of the site. For all of these reasons, the Planning Department has identified Cambon Avenue as a street that may require future sidewalk installation. The Planning Board has previously heard sidewalk waiver requests for Cambon Avenue in 2002 and 2003. On July 18, 2002, the Planning Board approved the waiver of required sidewalks on King Arthur's Court, but denied the waiver of sidewalks on Cambon Avenue within the subdivision known as Dominic Estates, number 975. At this hearing, the Planning Department cited the increase in traffic in the area and the reopening of Mill Pond Elementary School as the reasons for requiring sidewalks in the area. The memo to the Board stated that the town might someday have to construct sidewalks on Cambon Avenue, as happened on Southern Boulevard in Wisconsin. The Planning Department had no objection to the applicant placing the funds for the sidewalk in an escrow account for the future construction by the town. On June 4, 2003, the Planning Board also denied the waiver of required sidewalks on Cambon Avenue in the subdivision known as DeRazio Platt, number 1019. At that meeting, the Planning Department noted the significant amount of traffic on Cambon Avenue and anticipated that there will be a request to install sidewalks in the area. Therefore, the Planning Department recommended that the money be deposited into an escrow account for the future construction of sidewalks along Cambon Avenue. The Town Board accepted the funds in lieu of sidewalk construction on June 24, 2003. The Planning Board has not approved a sidewalk waiver on Cambon Avenue in the last 18 years. Therefore, the Planning Department objects to the applicant's requests insofar as Cambon Avenue has been identified as a site of future sidewalk installation due to the volume of high-speed traffic, narrow roadway and proximity to sidewalks and pedestrian destinations. In lieu of installing the 248 linear feet of sidewalk, the Planning Department recommends that the money be deposited into the Street Tree and Sidewalk Fund for the future construction of sidewalks along Cambon Avenue. The Planning Department offers the following resolution for the Board's consideration. Be it resolved that the Planning Board hereby denies the request of Joseph Melly, doing business as Ex-King Arthur's Court, LLC, to waive the requirement for the installation of 248 feet, linear feet of sidewalks on Cambon Avenue within the subdivision known as Omaro Platt 1122. However, the Board would accept a payment of $4,960, $20 times 248 linear feet to the Sidewalk Fund for the future installation of sidewalks on Cambon Avenue in lieu of installing the required sidewalks.
Thank you. Is there anyone here representing the applicant?
Joseph Melly, 11-story land road, St. James, New York, 11780. I'm the applicant. I'm asking for this waiver. I have pictures showing that there are no sidewalks on Cambon Avenue. I bought the property from the man who started this, John Omaro. His house has been sold now. There's a lot of work that needs to be done in front of the man's house that I'm not responsible to do. I don't know who is responsible to do. I could put these sidewalks in for probably $2,300, not $4,600. I have no problem putting them in, saves me $2,300, but you're going to have two houses in the middle of a block with sidewalks and two very, very angry neighbors. I'll give you the pictures to show you. You can even see my postings on. The old Omaro house, he's got retaining walls, he's got red maple trees. The other house has brand-new trees just put in. And I live in the neighborhood. I live off of Hillside Avenue. There's two stop signs on both roads. Not going to deny that people fly up and down the roads, but all the roads are posted 30 mile an hour speed limits. King Arthur's Court has no stop signs, is just as fast. You already granted me waivers for sidewalks on Astor Avenue, King Arthur's and Heidi Court last time. Astor Avenue has one stop sign, is just as small, and I didn't have to place money up for that. I just think it's over redundant on, you know, there's no sidewalks.
Thank you. Anybody in the audience which is here on this application? Members of the Board, questions? Frank, I have a question there. I see that one of these applications was back in 2003. That's 13 years, 10 years ago.
Mr. Chairman, could I also make a comment? I'm sure that these sidewalks have been waived probably back in the 70s because every bond comes out with a sidewalk and most people waive it. That's why they're not there. I mean, if they were supposed to be sidewalks on the road, how come the previous builder didn't put the sidewalks in? Why is it my responsibility to do somebody else's job?
Again, my question is, there was back in 2003 there and there's been no action there. So I rode up there and a lot of those old trees in there. To put sidewalks in, boy, you're going to knock down a lot of old trees. First of all, the road is not very wide.
I won't dispute that. The road is not very wide. However, the reasoning for this particular issue had to do with the fact that the Town Board in several locations in town, the nearest one to this one happened to be Southern Boulevard. We also had ones on Meadow Road that we had to go back and retrofit sidewalks on the roads afterwards. And this was in the 90s, and the town spent almost a million dollars in those two projects just retrofitting those two areas. And what we did afterwards was identify what were the likely candidates for those roads that might be requested for sidewalks in the future. And Cambon was one of those roads that we identified because of its straight length, its ability to have high-speed traffic, and so therefore we felt that this might be a candidate where they would request sidewalks in the future. So our recommendation to the Board has been on these roads that we identified, and by the way, they're identified in our comprehensive plan as well. We are not making recommendations to waive sidewalks on those streets because we think there is a potential out there. Whether they're going to be built or not is going to be up to the Highway Superintendent and the Town Board at a future time, but the probability is there that they might be requested because of the conditions.
And to answer your other question, Mr. Chairman, this was denied in 2003.
Would you take the mic, please, Alex?
This last application was denied in 2003. The 18 years refers to the last time this was approved on Cambon Avenue.
Is there other money? In other words, if we require this gentleman to set money aside, is there other money set aside for this by other builders?
Yes, that we could identify, at least what Alex found was at least two other cases. And I believe there's probably a couple of others. The money that's set aside in... The money that's set aside in escrow on this would probably only total, let's say, I would guess, maybe $25,000 to $40,000. To put sidewalks on that particular street for that particular length will cost, in the neighborhood, between 250 to, I don't know how much higher, it depends upon acquisition, tree location, other things that might have to be done.
What do you say to his argument that he could do it for $2,300?
If he could demonstrate that to the engineering department, and the engineering department feels that his estimate's a good estimate, then we would accept it.
Can you account for why it puts a big difference now?
The engineering department has a stock, uses a stock cost estimation, by book.
You guys, the engineering department in the town of Smithtown uses us builders, developers, as cheap labor. So basically, you know, I don't have to pay union dues. When those numbers are based on the bond, they're based on what the town would cost. Straight from Mr. Jorgensen's mouth on Astor Avenue when I dealt with him was, his cost is a lot more than my cost. So you guys use me as an extension of the town to do all this work, and sometimes the bonds aren't, they're not, you know, correct.
Excuse me. He said if you demonstrate to the-
I never have to demonstrate anything else.
Can I finish? Okay. If you demonstrate to, which department?
The engineering department.
The engineering department, that you would be able to put this in for $2,300, then we can pass this, require you to pay the $2,300.
But I don't want to pay anything, sir, because I already got a waiver for Astor Avenue, which you guys made me pay $10,000 in escrow to put in curbs, and you waived the sidewalks on that street, and that's just as dangerous as a street as Cambon Avenue. So I don't, I didn't have to give you guys an estimate or bring an estimate down to the town and get a reduction of my bond money that I'm trying to get off of. You know, I'm into this thing for $150,000.
Here's the problem, though. There's other builders on this road who have been required to pay into the fund.
I understand. I'm sure that if I go back and look at the engineering department, that this probably was already waived. So how could you waive something once before and then put it back on another bond?
I don't follow what you're saying there.
They built two houses, but you built that house, there's a bond.
My problem is, there seems to be a thought that they want sidewalks here. They've required other builders to do it, to pay into it, so how come we turn around and just waive it?
I would like to, who's going to pay for this man to put sidewalks in? I'm going to put them in. Who's going to pay for this guy to do all the construction to get rid of all this? Eventually, somebody's got to pay for that. So why should I be required to pay for it? I'm not making a buck here.
Excuse me for a minute. First of all, we're not antagonistic to you. We're trying to find a way to accommodate there the fact that you signed a bond to do this work. Now, we have waived sidewalks, like you said, in the past, but we're usually there where as a hardship, we try to accommodate the applicant if he's willing to be accommodated.
I'm willing to be accommodated, but I'm, you know, I also took, you know, $20,000 worth of dirt out of there that wasn't on the bond. I wasn't the one that officially signed the bond. It was Mr. O'Mara who took care of that. I'm just, I just bought, when I got it, I took over the bond. So I'm trying to be amenable, but it's like, you know, I can't pay the $2,300 to get my $120,000 out, so I have to go for a waiver. I can't give any, I can't pay you anything I don't have. My bank accounts have zero in them. I'm not making any money. I'm negative money on this job. There is no money, and I'm trying to get a waiver on it so I can move forward so I don't have to lose my house and stuff. That's where it's at. A hardship? Yeah, it's a big-time hardship.
You mentioned Astor Avenue?
Last year, not maybe a year ago, I got, you know, I got a waiver for street sidewalks on Astor Avenue. Yes.
Frank, what was the recommendation of the department at that time? Did we recommend the waiver on Astor?
I don't. I would have to, I have to take a look at it. I don't know. I'll be honest with you.
It's a different subdivision.
Understood, but the department is recommending that we not waive it here. Now, if they recommended waiver at that time, there's a distinction.
Absolutely. If they waived it last time, why would there be, you know, I was already thinking that this was already waived.
We understand the circumstances that everybody's in today. That's not the issue. The issue is that this is something that has been laid out by the planning department long before anybody, excuse me, just let me finish, that's been laid out by the planning department to get sidewalks on certain streets where they're going to accommodate what they feel is going to be high traffic and protect the people that live on that street. Now, the bond, the amount of money that was requested, I'll agree there, it's a substantial sum, but Mr. Ostrin just offered you there an opportunity there to meet with the engineering department and maybe accommodate there a lesser sum in order to be able there to move this application.
I understand, and I am grateful to that, the request, yes, and I can get a receipt tomorrow, probably cheaper than the $2,300, yes. And it's not a big deal to do that. The problem I have here is that it's like, you know, when is enough is enough? It's like, you know, I can't pay it, so you're going to hold me up to get off my bond because I can't pay the $2,300, but I got $120,000 sitting at Bank of Smithtown Peoples', but I can't get my money back. I'm out $150,000, but I can't get my money back on the bond until I rectify this, and this can't be rectified right now. I have other obligations.
Mr. Mealy?
Mr., just one more-
It's going to go right into, unfortunately, a little waiver request is going to go right into a big thing.
Let me just finish what we're saying. First of all, we did accommodate you on King Arthur's Court. We gave you a waiver of sidewalks on King Arthur's Court. That's a substantial amount of money that we saved you. Isn't that not right?
Yeah, but there are no sidewalks on King Arthur's Court either, and there's no sidewalks on Storyland Road, and there's no sidewalks on the whole development. I just, I don't get how you could take money. It's kind of like, you're taking money from me to do something that may get done. That's how I feel. Why wasn't it done when the original street was put in and the original builders built those houses? Why is it required for us to come back in now, a second time, probably?
Mr. Mealy, may I ask you a question? When you bought the subdivision from Mr. O'Mara, did you buy all the obligations?
I bought three obligations.
No, what I'm getting at is there's a $3,000 cash deposit on this particular subdivision.
Mr. O'Mara placed the cash deposit. I placed the $120,000 in cash.
Does he get the cash deposit back according to your agreement?
He gets the cash deposit back. I get my $120,000 in cash. At that point, I would be able to pay the $1,800, $2,300 in sidewalks. Until I get my money out of that, I can't do nothing. I can't even make my mortgage payment this month, and how sad is that?
Well, are you saying-
Business is very bad. I haven't sold anything. I had a house sold, I have people back out, divorced.
I'm trying to work with you, Mr. Mealy, I'm trying to work with you, okay? Are you basically saying to this board that if the bond was released and you got back your $120,000, that the, you'd be able to put up, let's say, $2,300 at that point?
I would pay based, I would pay, yes, yes, I can do that, and I would basically get, I would get an estimate based on what it would cost to put sidewalks on those two plots, since that's what I've been doing all along. You guys, you know, the street didn't cost me what you guys said it would, so.
If we could put together a conditional-
Absolutely.
-resolution to that effect, and you could convince the engineering department to lower it to $2,300, or-
Let's leave that open. Let him convince them as low as he can go.
Okay.
Whatever he convinces them. Whatever they approve.
The last time, I had no problem. I robbed Peter's, I robbed one job to pay the other job to get off of SEJ Estates bond, not to pay my $250 and ask for another extension. So I took my money, you know, I'm trying. It's odd, okay?
Well, you do know, I just, if you're looking at outstanding expenses, you have, once this is, the subdivision is released, you then have to post a growth and life bond. You are aware of that.
It's not a problem. I already have a growth and life bond for SEJ Estates.
So if we could put together with the attorneys some sort of conditional agreement, because this money is in escrow, and you wait to the, we wait to the release of the resolution of the performance bond, we could probably do something like that.
That would work, absolutely. And I am grateful and thankful that you would be willing to work with me on that. Thank you.
Okay. If the board will give us some time to put together this, I have to speak with the town attorney. I think we could come to some sort of an arrangement, and we could do it that way.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Frank. Appreciate it. Yes. Thank you very much, board. I really appreciate it.
You're quite welcome. What do we do? We adjourn this?
If you could adjourn it to the next meeting, I'll report to the board and to Mr. Mealy what we come up with, and we'll see if we could resolve this.
In the interim, is he going to address the question of what an estimate would be for sidewalks?
Yes, I'm going to ask him to meet with the town engineer. I'll give him a call tomorrow.
I'll, I got to make a phone call over to Steve tomorrow anyway, and I can get an estimate by the end of the day tomorrow and get it over to Mark.
Who's Steve?
Steve Schwab, he's town, assistant town engineer.
But I can get it over to Mark anyway, so. Thank you again.
Okay. We thank you. All right, there's a motion to adjourn, subject there to, Frank there getting the engineering department there to give us a-
Yes, in the matter of O'Mara Platt, number 1122, I move that we adjourn the matter until the next board meeting to permit the planning department and the applicant to work on the issues that were discussed in the hope that we could come to a resolution that is acceptable to all parties.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Mr. Chairman, the next, the next item on the agenda under Part III, Item 13, is a waiver request for Tahami Platt, 1135. This was heard at the last meeting and adjourned at the request of the applicant. You have a letter in correspondence notifying the board that the applicant has no objection to the board closing the hearing without him being present, and the recommendation of the planning department has not changed.
Members of the board, are you going to read that resolution in for the record?
Sure. The planning department offers-
That we can have a vote on?
Sure. The planning department offers the following resolution for the board's consideration. Be it resolved that the planning board hereby approves the request of Tahami Platt, 1135, to waive condition M, requiring that the applicant shall execute a maintenance agreement with the town of Smithtown for the maintenance and repair of the town-owned portion of Brangle Brink Road prior to filing the map with Suffolk County Clerk in the subdivision known as Tahami Platt, 1135, subject to the following condition. The applicant shall file a restrictive covenant for lots 1 and 2 of the subdivision known as Tahami Platt, 1135, on a form acceptable to the town attorney that acknowledges that Brangle Brink Road is not a dedicated street and not maintained by the town of Smithtown.
Thank you. Any questions by the board?
This is the same exact relief we gave the other applicant.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
A motion?
In the matter of Tahami Platt, number 1135, motion to adopt the resolution as read in accordance with the recommendation of the planning department.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. Memorandum on, is that anything we have to act on tonight?
No.
For the-
No, that's just for your information.
Just for my information. All right. On the minutes for May 1st, June 5th, June 19th, and July 17, 2013, I need a motion?
I move that we adopt the minutes of the meetings held on May 1, 2013, June 5, 2013, June 19, 2013, and July 17, 2013.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. Any other questions? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?